...to including Sinehanya in part of the list for flood mitigation projects from the Department of Public Works, substitute bill number 307-32 by Senator Frank Uggan, Jr., and it's relative to the power of the Judicial Council to adopt pay schedules and plans appropriate and to appropriate funds for salary and benefit increases for non-law enforcement employees of the judiciary. Bill 309-32 by Senator, by Speaker Pangolinan, and it's relative to the appropriation of Section 30 funds and for other purposes. Bill 335-32 LS by Senator Rodriguez, and it's relative to exemptions and exceptions for social worker licensure. And resolution number 337-32 by Senator Sniklis, and it's relative to asking the Congresswoman Bernalio to introduce legislation to allow Governor of Guam employees to be covered under Social Security. What's not contained in this agenda that I'm asking for adoption are all the appointments to various boards and commissions. However, I would read that as we move forward in the session agenda if this is adopted.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion without any objections, so can I ask Senator Mike Sniklis if he can lead us in prayer, and then Senator McCready for the recitation of Immecresci.
Name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us all here together this day. We thank you for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon us as an island and a people over this last year. Your grace is always present among us, and while we may never always agree, we do always strive to do what is best for our people as we have learned and as we have been taught. And we seek you and your guidance always to try and do what's best. Please give us the patience to listen to each other, the open-heartedness to understand not only what others are sharing but what others are feeling, and the mindfulness to be able to really put ourselves into other people's shoes and to imagine what it is that we need to do in order to bring solutions and good things to the people that we serve. We ask that you bless this house and you keep us all in your presence. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Senator, for the recitation of Immecresci. Senator McCready, can you lead us?
I will be standing on three.
Okay. Thank you, Senator.
Immecresci. In mastakulum, dihinasoko, in mastakulum, dihodasama, jenimasfigo, nanashinaho, go presenmaestzo, parabayu, botehi, jahudi, kendi, ihimendi, ikurutura, ilenguahi, ihaeni, ihanam, jenihana, chamoro, niyanshaku, derezo, gienazu, sata, eshtigu, pitma, ihilui, biblia, jenipanderahu, bandera, guahan.
And can I ask Senator Morrison if he can lead us in the Guam hymn in chamoro, and Senator Frank Uggan, the singing of the national anthem.
(Singing) At no time, no time, who did I know that? I'm not a man who's not a man. Para, I know that, para, I know that, I'm a man who's not a man. Para, I know that, para, I know that, I'm a man who's not a man. Oh, say, can you see why the lost early night was so proudly red? fire? For the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red flag, the bonkers evening, it grew to the night, and our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Thank you very much. Can I ask the clerks to please take roll call?
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Uggan. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duennas. Senator Lim Tiako. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Sniklis. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Majority Leader, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the legislative journal dated May 5th through May 9th, 2014, as well as June 5th, 2014, subject to corrections.
On the motion, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions that I move that they be appended to the session journal.
On the motion without any objections, so ordered.
And also on item eight, communications and petitions, there's been a request by Speaker Pangolinan to read a communication or petition that he's received and to read that into the record. I'd ask that we recognize him at this time.
Speaker Pangolinan, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And buenas dotos amtuni, mangagi faugwini na ogan, dan todulokui manei kungguk. Madam Speaker, I rise to this communication that was recently submitted to the legislature just to point out, I think, some of the actions that have occurred relative to the issuance, the issue of income tax refunds, their payment, and the administrators' actions regarding this issue. On June 9th, your office received an emergency procurement certificate requesting that the Governor's Office procure a bond based on a district court decision regarding, of course, the timely payment of income tax refunds. And it was prompted, of course, by a memorandum from the Chief of Staff of the Governor to the Governor himself, reference, of course, the Payesti versus the Government of Guam in that district court civil case, and his request for the certificate of a supersede bond. Madam Speaker, once again, we find ourselves that the Governor has continued to frustrate the process of just following the law with regards to income tax refunds, which was the basis of the lawsuit. The district court issued a decision on this matter last week, and the Governor had requested that the issuance of a bond be waived with regards to ensuring that the plaintiff's attorneys and the court case moves forward and that the order, original order of the judge be carried out. The Governor had, of course, filed three appeals in this case. One to appeal the attorney's fees, two to appeal the entire decision, and a third consolidating the two appeals. And it is that decision that the Governor continues to proceed, spending public funds to challenge the right of taxpayers to be paid in a timely manner as determined and ordered by the District Court of Guam. Why does the Governor insist on continuing to spend public funds to ensure that he and he alone decides when he will pay refunds? Madam Speaker, this commitment to pay refunds in a timely manner had never resulted before in this action by this administration or any other administration in the past until the court case was filed and the court decision was ordered that every taxpayer of Guam has a right to receive timely payment of refunds after the filing date, and that's six months. And the Governor continues to challenge that and to appeal it to the Ninth Circuit Court. Why are we continuing to allow this? And now we have the Governor being ordered by the court to place a bond to make sure he pays the attorneys and continues to pay the refunds, Madam Speaker. What is important, Madam Speaker, is what the Governor is asserting in this lawsuit. He's asserting that he will pay the, he will pay the attorney's fees. As a matter of fact, he had the Department of Administration, Ms. Benita Manglona, according to the filing and the order of the court, whether or not the Government of Guam will be willing and able to pay attorney's fees judgment. Defendants, which is the Governor, asserts that the Government of Guam is willing and able to pay the plaintiff's fees awarded in the attorney orders fees by virtue of the government position as a sovereign taxing immunity. The Director of Administration, Benita Manglona, has provided the court a declaration in which she states, "In the event that the Ninth Circuit Court affirms the final judgment against the Government of Guam, then the Government of Guam guarantees full payment of that judgment for the attorney's fees and costs. Moreover, if the judgment is affirmed, the Government of Guam can and will deliver the payment to the plaintiffs without any further action from the plaintiffs." This is the Governor directing his Director of Administration to assert this before the court and declare it. And here's the court's response. The entire case is about the Government of Guam's unwillingness to timely pay its obligations. The entire case, the entire appeal, is that the Government of Guam was not willing to do this, and the Governor wanted to continue to have unfeathered right to make a determination on when he's going to pay refunds, not what the court ordered. The Government of Guam has also raised baseless arguments in its present attempts to avoid paying plaintiffs, including the defendant's assertion that the court lacked subject matter jurisdiction over this case. And it footnotes that the defendants raised this argument in their objections to the plaintiff's motion for review of the cost. Madam Speaker, it further states, and that the writs of execution against the Government of Guam are forbidden as a matter of law. The court is not persuaded that the government will pay timely should defendants lose their appeal. I mean, Madam Speaker, we have the Governor making all these public statements about all of his commitments, but when he goes before the court, the court says, "No, we don't believe you. You have no track record demonstrating your commitment to that," Madam Speaker, "and that the only reason why you're doing this is because you're under court order to do so." And that lifting of that court order will bring us right back to where we were, where the Governor makes the final decision of who to pay and when to pay. And we cannot afford that, Madam Speaker. The taxpayers of Guam do not want to go back to those days, yet that is what the Governor is doing in his appeal. The government also says that Dillon factors determine the amount of a supersede bond, and the complexity in the collection process, the amount of time required to adjourn the judgment, et cetera. And third, the degree of confidence that the district court has in the ability of funds to pay the judgment. Four, whether the defendant's ability to pay the judgment is so plain that the cost of a bond would be a waste of money. And five, whether the defendant is in such a precarious financial situation that the requirements to post a bond would place other creditors of the defendant in an insecure position. The court goes further to state that the first two Dillon factors, the complexity and the time involved in collecting from the defendants, balance in favor requiring the bond because the defendants have already demonstrated an unwillingness to pay patient, to pay the plaintiff's attorney's fees. For example, defendants did not request a stay and order to post a bond in the case until five months after the court's attorney's fees ordered. The Governor could have gone very early on and says, "Don't worry, we'll pay this. We'll do so based upon our..." They waited, sat back five months. And again, we reiterate that the court further states that these are baseless arguments that the Governor is putting before the court through his attorneys, and as discussed above, that defendants have avoided, have attempted to avoid paying the plaintiffs by raising meritless arguments relating to the jurisdiction of the court's ability to impose writs of execution. Based on the government's history of failing to pay, to timely pay its obligations, the court is not persuaded by the third and fourth factors, as I had read earlier, relating to whether the Government of Guam can pay the plaintiff, way in favor of waiving the bond requirement. Lastly, the parties agree that the fifth Dillon factor, whether the government is in a precarious situation, is irrelevant here. Accordingly, the Dillon factors weigh of requiring a full bond to be issued. Again, Madam Speaker, it further goes to state in the federalism argument that the Governor placed before the court, that because of the defendant's demonstrated unwillingness to pay refunds to the plaintiffs, it suggests that collecting the attorney's fees will be complex and time-consuming should the defendants lose their appeal. Again, Madam Speaker, it's this issue that while the Governor pleads to the general public of all of the things that he's doing in order to ensure the timely payment of refunds, and I must give him credit, he has adhered to that court order. He hasn't voluntarily done it. He has adhered to the court order, and he has accelerated the payments of the refunds, and we certainly support him in that effort. The problem is that the Governor then continues to go to the district court and appeal that court order that has resulted in the timely payment of refunds through this appeal process, and he continues to fight the court order. If that court order is lifted or vacated or by the appeal process, we go right back to where we are. And so I rise, Madam Speaker, to, of course, bring to the attention of this body and the general public of what the public perception is with regards to the payment of refunds and what the realities are with regards to the issue of these refunds and the court case that the Governor continues to appeal. Once again, Madam Speaker, several months ago, in an article I had written for the Mariana's Variety, I'm appealing to the Governor to not appeal. Why does the Governor, who has adhered to the court order, who has demonstrated that the process in place allows for the timely payment of refunds, why does he want to lift a court order that affirms that right to the, of the taxpayer? And why does he want to remove that right, vacate that right, and place that right, that right back in the Governor's seat? If he was Governor forever, maybe. He's not going to be Governor forever. And the system that we have in place and the processes that we have in place is what has allowed for the payment of these refunds over the last three or four years in a timely manner to the people that we owe who have overpaid this government. So, Madam Speaker, those are the issues as related to the communications that I cited that I want the people of Guam to know and become aware of. Thank you, and si dos masi, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Rispisho?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imagallah and Gohan, and I move that they be appended to the session journal.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
As well as reports of standing committees, I also move that they be appended to the session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are no reports of select committees, and so under item 12, introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, I move that bill number 347-32COR to bill number 349-32COR be given its first reading.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
I move that resolution number 396-32LS through resolution number 397-32 also be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
And I move that resolution number 398-32COR through resolution number 401-32COR also be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
And I move that certificate number 159-32COR also be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, under motions, I move that any resolution of certifi, of condolence or congratulatory nature that's introduced during the duration of this session be adopted, that all senators be cosponsors, and that the sponsors of these resolutions of condolences or certificate in nature be, that the sponsors work closely with the legal counsel and the clerk in the preparation and development of these documents.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, at this time, I want to provide for courtesies to any member who would like to do an override at this point.
I'm sorry?
If there are any overrides at this point, I just want to provide for some courtesy. There being none, Madam Speaker, and I'll also defer my own override attempt at this time. I would like to proceed to legislative concurrence, item four. So, under legislative concurrence, Madam Speaker, I, yeah, I move that the following appointments be placed in the legislative concurrence file. Crystal K. Kogo from Vice Speaker BJ Cruz's committee to serve as a member of CAHA. From my committee, William Dietrich to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board. From Senator Tom's committee, on the appointment of Oscar Cavo to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Jose de Leon Gero Commercial Port of Guam. Mr. James Castilio to be a construction industry representative of the Contractors License Board. Adelia Custodio to be a general member representative of the Contractors Licensing Board. From Senator Barnes's committee, Mr. Zenon Ballinger to be a member of the Haganya Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners. And finally, from Senator Mike Sniklis's committee, Mr. Edward Giantalon to serve as a board director member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority. And Mr. Gerald A. Cruz to serve as a member of the Guam Regional Transit Authority Board of Directors. And we'll get the specific verbiage to the clerk on these, all these appointments.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And then I also, then again, based on the adoption of these individuals to be placed in the legislative concurrence, I move that they all be moved to the voting file.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And then finally, Madam Speaker, there are no items on the consent calendar, and we can proceed, if you wish, to the second reading file.
Thank you very much, Mr. Majority Leader. On bill number one, substitute bill 334-32LS. Yes?
Because we are ready in the second reading file, I would like to make a notwithstanding motion that we also include Pali Micrososmo to serve on the Criminal Injuries Compensation Commission Board and to put that in the legislative concurrence file.
Are there any objections? No objections, thank you.
But as well, then I then move, notwithstanding the House rules, that Pali Micrososmo nomination to the Criminal Injuries Compensation Board be placed in the voting file.
Thank you, Senator, so no objections, so ordered.
And so on second reading.
Okay. So, second reading then is bill number 334-32LS as substituted. So, Senator, your, Senator Rispisho, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. And first, I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for calling session on a very time-sensitive matter, Bill 334-32LS, and it's as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land. And I move that this be placed in the voting file with some discussion.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm very grateful to the Appropriations Chairman for hearing this bill, which would appropriate $206,550 from the Supplemental Appropriations Revenue Fund for the purchase of a ballot tabulation system and the purchase of ballot stock and coding services to be utilized by the Guam Election Commission to conduct the November 2014 and future elections and for other purposes. Madam Speaker, we've heard the Guam Election Commission publicly say that there's a need to, to just change the tabulator machines that they use on the night of the primary and general elections, and we've heard them early on say that they're going to require an appropriation to the tune of about $400,000 to $500,000. And when they first started making their intentions public, the Appropriations Chairman advised them that they should just go ahead and do the invitation for bid or the request for proposal or whatever that they do that's consistent with the procurement law to see what those machines would cause, to look at different, different kind of tabulator machines consistent with the recent law that we passed that requires that we reform the manner in which the elections are handled here in the island, that we move forward to providing for free and fair elections and so that we never, we never have any problems of the election process as we've most recently seen in the 2010 election. And so the Guam Election Commission, I'm very proud to say, Madam Speaker and colleagues, they certainly did their due diligence. They decided on the different kind of machines that they wanted to do, consistent with the new law that we passed, and they, they went out and they've asked for, for businesses to respond to their invitation for bid, and they came back and, and with a request that wasn't $500,000, but they came back with a request that was going to be for 200, $2,500 for the, actually, $134,250 for three ballot tabulators, as well as $48,500 that would be used for the ballot stock and the programming services for these 2014 elections. They've also came back and, and advised the Appropriation Committee that there's a $23,800 outstanding amount that's payable to the Guam, to the University of Guam for the use of the fieldhouse during the 2012 primary election. So, the Appropriations Chair sought fit to also put that $23,800 item in this bill. And so, Madam Speaker, time is of the essence because, as you know, we have a primary and general election, and based on the Guam Election Commission's timelines, they're in dire need of this legislative appropriation, and if the Governor also sees fit and signs it, they'll be able to move forward with the awarding of this, of this bid pursuant to the bid that they've, they've issued. And so I ask for, for my colleagues to, to support Bill 334-32LS as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations.
On the motion? There being none? Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to rise in support of Bill 334-32. As articulated by the retiring speaker and the author of the legislation, it certainly was pleasant to find that the original request of half a million was pared down to the 140-plus amount that was actually required for the purchase of these tabulators. You know, they, we continue to, to... You know, they -- we continue to work with the bills that are introduced out of the Committee on Appropriations, assisted by the Office of Finance and Budget, and try to come as close as we can to what the actual expenditure is going to be. One of the criticisms that we always receive about government procurement, and in some instances, we cannot get around it, is that we kind of telegraph how much we're willing to pay, and then everybody says, "Okay, how much are you willing to pay us? Well, you got $400,000. I'm thinking I'm willing to pay you $399,000," you know? Because we rely on the theory that market forces and competition will dictate the price. And we find that in some instances that works, in other instances, it doesn't. And in this one case, that's exactly what we found, that in fact, the market forces worked in this regard, and that those who wanted to provide the machines and had -- which had the capability of meeting the needs and requirements of the Guam Election Commission were able to compete and present their machines for evaluation by the Guam Election Commission Board. And so, Madam Speaker, I certainly thank the good senator for this. In addition, Madam Speaker, we have had some of the departments, or the University of Guam in this particular case, support the tabulation process. And in that tabulation process, part of that support is the service of the UOG Fieldhouse and the cost of operating that facility. And so, we find that it is an event that is not part of their revenue stream, and so we are providing that the University of Guam will be provided for the cost of providing the University of Guam Fieldhouse as a venue for the tabulation of election night votes cast by the people of Guam. And so, Madam Speaker, I certainly want to stand in support with those issues that framed the support that we had and the analysis that we provided. The other thing, Madam Speaker, is that the appropriation is going to come out of the SAR Fund, and the SAR Fund is the excess revenues collected over and above the revenue estimates. Now, in the past, we've had an argument, and in some instances, a position taken by the administration that the SAR Fund is really not a real fund, that there's really no excess revenues, and so forth. But surprisingly, Madam Speaker, in a bill that I had earlier introduced, which was to provide, I think it was $23,000 for the cost of the settlement of lawsuit that Mr. Castro from Odo Chalampago had brought upon the people of Guam for the taking of his land for inverse condemnation of his property, and that the Attorney General and the attorney for Mr. Castro had agreed that $23,000 was fair compensation for the 20 years that he had to wait for the inverse condemnation of a piece of his property, and we appropriated it out of the general fund. And in the fiscal note that we received on that bill, the administration said, "We agree that we need to settle Mr. Castro's issue. We agree that it's an injustice that Mr. Castro continues to suffer, and it still supes time that we extinguish his claim through the payment of what has been negotiated between the government of Guam, the Attorney General's office," that the payment of $23,000 should be made. But the appropriate mechanism for making this appropriation is that it should come out of the SAR Fund. And then they cited that based upon the revenue estimates and collections, the CRE report that are signed off by the Director of Administration, the Director of Revenue and Taxation, and the Bureau of Budget and Research, had in fact, revenue collections had exceeded their budget projections and their budget allocations for the first two quarters of this fiscal year, and that in that revenue collection, there would be -- and that the money should go to the SAR Fund, and that this appropriation should come out of the SAR Fund. And so, based on that information, that policy statement by the Bureau of Budget and Management, and that acknowledgement that in fact, the SAR Fund is the appropriate fund to handle expenditures not originally budgeted in the Budget Act, and what should be charged against, it should be charged against, collection of revenues not accounted for in the revenue adopted numbers of the budget bill, that it should come out of the SAR Fund. And so, that's why in this bill, you see that it comes out of the SAR Fund, because they have said that there's enough revenue from the actual collections over the projected revenues of the government of Guam as determined by the Department of Administration, BBMR, and Rev and Tax. And so, there really should be no argument in this case unless the governor decides to reverse his position on that and say there's no money in the SAR Fund. But he's already acknowledged that the proper process and mechanism for making these appropriations outside of the current operating requirements, as approved in the budget for FY 2014, that they should be funded out of the excess revenues, and that excess revenues should be in the SAR Fund. And we hope that they continue to make the deposits into the SAR Fund as required by present statute to ensure that funding that is then to be charged against the SAR Fund is funded and released to the required department or agency of this government. Thank you, Ensidus Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Speaker Pangolino. On the motion, Senator McCready?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I ask for a quick one-minute recess while I get my amendment ready. Please.
You're going to take a brief recess.[1020.54]
The legislature is back in session. Senator McCready, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I first want to commend the author of Bill 334, Senator Raspiciu, for his leadership and his action on the purchase of ballot tabulation systems for the Guam Election Commission for this election in 2014. And this being an appropriation measure, Madam Speaker, I would like to proffer an amendment. Before I do, I'd like to kind of go over why I'm going to proffer this amendment. As we move forward in the year and closer to the elections, and we get brand-new tabulation machines for the Guam Election Commission, and we appropriate monies for that, I think it's only fair that we also look at the overtime of the Guam Police Department, which is at about $600,000. Now, based on fiscal note of a previous bill that I was going to proffer this amendment for, there's over a million dollars in a fund that can pay for this overtime. Now, some might say, "What does this have to do, or why is this germane to to this piece of legislation?" Well, I think it's germane because it's an appropriation measure. Maybe it's not a supplement, maybe it's a direct appropriation member, but it's still an appropriation measure. And I would challenge anyone in here to fight against paying overtime for the people that protect us. So when we put our children to bed at night, tuck them in, make sure they're fed and clothed, they assure the safety of our children and our families when we're sleeping. So anyone who would push back against paying overtime for the Guam Police Department should really think about that. And you can say it's germane, or you can say it's not germane, but it's an appropriation measure, and I think it's time that we focus our resources on where they count most, and public safety is one of them. Madam Speaker, Public Law 25003 authorized 445 full-time positions, FTEs, at GPD. Now, that was back in 1999. In 2014, where crime is rampant, we have approximately 300 uniform officers, or to be exact, 304 uniform officers, 63 civilian employees, which is much lower than the 445 that we needed back in 1999. Madam Speaker, if the time now is not to pay overtime to our police department, then when is it? When is this body going to stand in front of the Guam Police Department and lead the way? We're the leaders of this island. We make these decisions. This is a must. If we, which I do believe we should, buy new tabulators for the Guam Election Commission, then by all means, we should be paying overtime for our public safety officials who risk their lives every day to protect us. Anything short of that would be a lack of leadership in this body. Anything short of pointing the finger at another agency or another branch of government would be a lack of leadership on this body. The time to do this is right now. I ask that if you're going to rule, or anyone's going to object, the germaneness of this bill, they really think about the consequences that it might affect this island and its community, the morale that the Guam Police Department has, the criminals that they catch, the family members who on summertime want to take their family off-island, as we do. They deserve it. They work for that money. So we don't need to point the finger. We don't need to blame anyone else. We have the ability, we have the money, and we have the authority and obligation to take care of our public safety, which is the Guam Police Department, right now. And I say, "We do it, pay their overtime, and be able to put our heads on our pillows with our families at night because we are safe." Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator McCready. Holy cow, this is a brand-new battery that was put in here. So, I was just going to say, you're right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So my amendment would be line 23, page 3, section 3, which is a new subsection, "Law enforcement prior year overtime", the sum of $600,000 is hereby appropriated from the payment of prior years overtime incurred by the Guam Police Department.
Okay, thank you very much. You've read now your amendment, and I'm going to rule and challenge, me, I suppose, because you said that, and I'm going to call for a point of personal privilege in this particular case when you say there's a lack of leadership. But there are also rules that need to be followed here in this body. And I take you to page 35 of our rules, our own rules for the legislature, undermainness, of course, of a subject matter, one subject matter. I'll take you also to page 37, that talks about unrelated appropriations that are not considered germane, except that the annual bill shall have one annual supplement. I'll take you even further to a law, which is Section 2108, on separate considerations for unrelated matter, very similar to our standing rules. So I ruled that amendment non-germane. Now, of course, I will not deny that you could challenge, again, my decision, and you would take eight votes then to overrule my decision.
Yes, I would like to challenge and overrule your decision, and I would like to give it to the body for a vote.
So there is, then, he is...
I'd like to call the question if I have to.
He's challenging my decision of it being non-germane on the basis of the legislature's standing rules and the law, because then, of course, he can turn around. He still has the opportunity, as any member here, is to introduce legislation, a totally separate legislation if he wants then, and identify a funding source, of course, to appropriate. So all those who then would like to...
Point of information, Madam Speaker, could we take a recess? Tom Mees not here? Senator Morrison?
I'm sorry, you should be in here if you want to vote. All those in favor, then, of overruling my decision, it's going to take eight votes to overrule my decision of non-germane. Please raise your hand. It fell. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the Guam Election Commission appropriation? Senator, Senator Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the appropriation. I think that it's going to be a good thing for the upcoming election, and we want to make sure we provision appropriately for it. With respect to the recently failed amendment, I also appreciate what was brought up, as do I think every single member of this body. We do need to do something comprehensive for our police department. That includes not just overtime, but addressing the lack of equipment, addressing the lack of a progressive career track, addressing the lack of officers to be able to know exactly how they're going to get from PO1 all the way up to chief if they ever wanted to go that route. So I appreciate all the work that's been brought forward in this discussion. I look forward to all of us working together as a body to not only move Bill 334 forward, but to also fully address the overtime concerns that were rightfully brought up. And I'm sure, Madam Speaker, that in your recent ruling, it was an issue of procedural integrity that we need to make sure we maintain in everything that we do here, but it was in no way a testament to the positions of the body with respect to those who keep us safe on our streets, who I personally have had already in the last year multiple encounters with, that were not only very professionally handled, but have made me very reassured as to their ability to do their job. And I think we're all going to work together, maybe in this upcoming budget cycle, to address that overtime issue, as well as all the other issues that were brought up. But with respect to Bill 334, I think that this is a necessary component to address the upcoming procedural issues that need to be dealt with, with respect to the Guam Election Commission, and I thank the author for moving this issue forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion? Senator Raspiciu, would you like to close? On the motion, then, to send substitute Bill 334-32 LS to third reading, file without any objections, so ordered. Bill, substitute Bill Number 173-32, Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 173-32 LS as introduced. We move to the third reading, and can I just briefly speak on it?
Okay, so as introduced?
As introduced.
Thank you, Senator. Yes, you may proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill 173-32 LS is a bill, an act to amend Section 2G of Public Law 32-053 relative to flood mitigation projects of the Department of Public Works. This bill was introduced last year, Madam Speaker, because the previous bill that was introduced that will take care of funding for flood mitigation projects around the island was entertained. It was inadvertently left out to include a request done by the village of Sinahanya. There was a letter attached to the bill asking that the high flooding areas, which were a priority in the Sinahanya area, be included in the mitigation projects. Were the five major flooding areas in that village, which was Spring Leg, Dassel Road, Lucio Road, Tsauut Street, and the Otut Court. Madam Speaker, it's real short. It's just to, this bill as introduced is just to include the village of Sinahanya in that project because it wasn't included earlier. And I ask that my colleagues support that effort. Senator Massey.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, I say, recognize Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, and good morning, Hafaday, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise to, in support of Bill 173. And just to give a little bit of background, when we were developing this bill, which is now Public Law 3253, from the public hearing, we heard from the mayor's council, from the mayor, saying the best way to address the flooding situations in the villages with the limited amount of money we've identified was to get the mayor to submit five of their flood-prone areas in their villages. And so there was a deadline to submit it, so that I believe that the committee, to submit it to the committee. And so, you know, as we were getting this, the mover of this legislation's right, it was inadvertently left out. It wasn't sent in on the time where it was agreed upon. However, knowing full well, as the bill moved forward, became law, and knowing full well that Sinahanya is not going to be left out, by all means, in this project to work on flood work around the villages, the plan in moving forward was always keeping in mind that there was 19 villages. And so, you know, maybe just to take this opportunity to give a little bit of background and update on what's happening here, is that what the mayor's council has decided, that the money that's been set aside now for the top five projects in their villages is now going to be used to purchase heavy equipment. And these heavy equipment will be used to do flood mitigation work around the villages. We know that from the professionals at DPW that what needs to be done is cleaning of these drainages, ensuring that, you know, when heavy rains come down, that our drains that are there now are free and open, so that runoff water can get to it. And so that's what is happening now, in terms of the flood work being conducted in all 19 villages. And yes, this is something that we need to ensure that we pass to formally and officially ensure that Sinahanya is included, but as I said earlier, things are moving forward with Sinahanya's concerns part of this effort. And so, Madam Speaker, I have a floor amendment that was distributed to our colleagues here. What this does is add a Section 3 to this bill. And what this Section 3 does is it amends Section 3 of Public Law 3253. And I'll read it. It adds, "Section 3, unused appropriation. Funds may be expended pursuant to the provisions of this act following the date of enactment and shall continue to be available for its stated purpose until expended. Any excess funds shall be used by the Director of DPW to fulfill additional work listed in Section 2 of this act." And so what has happened here, Madam Speaker, is this law became effective, I believe it was July 5th of last year. And so the one-year expiration on time to expend these funds is coming up, which is July 5th. And a lot of the projects that were listed in Public Law 3253 are moving forward. Some are in the final phase of contract negotiations. Awards have been awarded to contractors for certain projects. And so what this does here is protect the funds that we have allocated and appropriated for these specific purposes. And so, you know, not to jeopardize these funds, and not to jeopardize any of the progress that's happening with the flood work and other related capital improvement, I'm asking my colleagues to please support and pass this amendment as well. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, any objections? No objections, so ordered. Thank you very much. You still have the floor, Senator Rodriguez. You're done? Okay, Senator Duñez, you're recognized. Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I certainly rise in full support of Bill 173-32 LS. I want to start by thanking my good colleague, the mover of this bill, for getting me and my good friend Senator Tonyada off the hook, as we're both from Sinahanya, and we certainly heard it from our mayor. So Mayor, if you're listening, Mayor Hoffman, we got it in. And also, Madam Speaker, I did have a chance, at the request of the mayor's council several months ago, because of my tenure at land management, I had an opportunity to present to them the efforts that this body is doing. And as the good Senator Rodriguez has just moved now to continue the issues of flood mitigation at several different levels, obviously this one being in terms of their acquisition of heavy equipment. That was one of the key issues with all the overgrowth on the shoulders and the drainages and the like. That's really one of the first tiers of causing the flooding within our villages, simply because DPW no longer has the resources, really, and the manpower to go out there and do what they did years ago, Madam Speaker. So it's a great opportunity for all of us to join together on the first major issue, as well as we know that within our villages, we've gotten, we've fallen behind on the issue of stormwater drainage. It's just a fact. So in the future, there may be opportunities, even with some land exchange opportunities and the like, for those areas where people really, there's just no relief at this point. Their houses get flooded on a perennial basis, but that's beyond the scope of this. But I just wanted to say to Madam Speaker that this is the first step, and with Senator Rodriguez's amendment, and our opportunities to give the mayor's the frontline opportunity to do a shoulder removal, and also the stormwater drainage that they have renovation, to include, Madam Speaker, also some of the punting basins that also have just grown over, some not even identifiable anymore. That heavy equipment can go into that as well, to rejuvenate those punting basins, and really be proactive in this effort for flood mitigation, especially with the rainy season coming, Madam Speaker. So, once again, Senator Tina Munia Barnes, thank you for getting us off the hook, and I certainly look forward to voting on this bill, and maybe we'll do a signing ceremony with Mayor Hoffman. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, are there any, anyone else would like to speak? Senator Munia Barnes to close. Send it down. On the motion, then, to send Bill 173-32 to the third reading, file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Frank Uggun on substitute Bill 307.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, fellow colleagues. I'd like to, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of Bill Number 307-32COR as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Works, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, interreading for consideration by this body.
And you may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I believe that with the extraction of the previous section in the original legislation that would have provided the half a million dollars for the implementation of the Competitive Wage Act, this provision provides the judiciary Guam that authorization. Based on what is provided in, or available through Public Law 32-68, which is the fiscal year budget bill, that the $468,000, which now the judiciary is receiving on a regular basis, could now be expended for this purpose. But I just want to clarify one thing, Madam Speaker, and the chairman of Finance can probably allude to this when we entertain legislation that he has proffered. But this would allow the judiciary to effectuate and to implement the competitive wage program starting in June, once this legislation, should the governor sign it into law, prospectively for the balance of the fiscal year. The issue that remains is the obligation to apply equity across the board between the judiciary and the executive branch agencies in terms of taking care of the retroactive component, which is what the original legislation would have provided, a half a million dollar allocation to make the judiciary whole. But I appreciate the Chair of Finance reporting this particular legislation out, Madam Speaker, and at least the judiciary will now have that authorization to be able to implement the competitive wage program, and then hopefully we'll deal with the funding requirement for the retro funding aspect back to February in a different legislation. So I ask for all of our colleagues, Madam Speaker, for their consideration and the support of this measure. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I wanted to rise in support of the legislation. And I also wanted to use this opportunity to commend the judiciary. When we passed 32-68 on the Competitive Wage Act, we had asked that certain prerequisites be fulfilled before the law could go into effect. And I have to commend the judiciary, because when they reviewed the passage of 32-68, and the committee report, and also the discussion on the floor, they realized that the legislature had asked for certain things. And their legal counsel, though it was opposite to their best interest, was ethical enough to say, "In spite of the fact that this could benefit me, starting February, I'm going to be advising the judicial council that I have issues with the way that the bill was passed, and whether there was complete compliance." And the judiciary decided that it was going to deny its employees their competitive wage increases. And so for the last five months, they've not, four months, they've not received their increase, whereas the executive did. The governor did transmit to them their share of what was supposed to have paid for the competitive wage increase, but the judiciary decided that it was not, they didn't believe that they could utilize it. And they wanted this piece of legislation to, as it were, absolve them, or at least authorize them to move forward with it. So I want to commend them because, as was stated at the public hearing by one of the other senators, it's very commendable that the branch that is responsible for the rule of law did follow the rule of law and denied itself the increase until it would get this piece of authorization. So I rise in support of this legislation and commend the judiciary for that very ethical opinion and the position that they took to make sure that the rule of law was complied with.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. Anybody else? Speaker Pangolino, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too want to, of course, rise in support of the bill as offered by Senator Frank Uggun, oversight chair over the judiciary. And just to plain the process of the issue of, first of all, thanking the judiciary for, as the retiring Chief Justice and Vice Speaker had said, looking at the law, making a determination on the applicability of that law to the judiciary, and whether or not it is consistent with laws passed governing the implementation of the Competitive Wage Act. And in their analysis by their staff attorneys, they had determined that the law, the plan that was supposed to be submitted by the governor was not placed before this body with the elements required for this body to assess the implementability of that act, and so forth. And I think the judiciary did the right thing, and we see what is happening. And I think that judiciary did the right thing, and we see what is happening. In the implementation plan that this legislature requested, what we wanted to do was to ensure that one, proper was funding was provided for the implementation to the departments, agencies, and branches of this government of Guam, which we know did not happen. Number two, we wanted to ensure that the employees had their questions resolved of where they would fit in the new pay scale and pay plan for the departments and agencies in which they work, and we know that did not happen. We know that there are over a thousand appeals that we believe have been reported, filed with the Civil Service Commission, on grievances in which employees felt that the implementation of the hay plan either demoted them or reduced their pay. And so these appeals are winding their way now through the process, but over a thousand of employees are out there now, Madam Speaker, having to come back and fight this case, where if only the administration had complied with the law and submitted the plan, these issues could have been resolved prior to the implementation without any loss in pay because the implementation would still have gone back to St. Valentine's Day, if you recall, was the implementation. It would have still made it retro, but we would have resolved these questions and not have to force the employees through the civil service system appeals process. We're doing a huge disservice to these employees right now, to the teachers and other employees of this government of Guam, that now have to re-justify their pay and their position and their functions through this process, if only, if only, if only the administration had the same respect for law that the judiciary had. And so we need to fix the judiciary to allow them to begin the implementation of the hay study, and they can begin that with the over $474,000, I believe, allocation under the appropriation that was provided for the implementation of the hay study. So as we move forward on this thing, the judiciary begins that process. Any additional obligation that the judiciary finds after exhausting that $454 for the implementation of the hay plan will then be dealt by this body through, we have a provision in one of the later bills that allows for any additional revenues recognized and received by this government of Guam to be placed towards those funding shortfalls for the different departments and agencies for the balance of the 50%, initial 50%. Because while all the executive branch agencies have received the full 50% implementation, the governor, in his allocation, did not fully fund the other departments and semi-autonomous agencies of the government of Guam, like the Attorney General's Office, like OPA, like the judiciary. And those issue will be resolved in an early, in a later bill that this body will entertain. And then we can move forward, and if that program doesn't work out, then, of course, we are in the middle of the budget hearing process at this time, and we have asked all of these departments and agencies to give us the full implementation costs for 100% of the implementation of the hay plan for FY 2014, what their allocation was, and what was allotted to them, and what was transferred in cash to them by the administration, and the difference between the two will have to be dealt with during the budget process, which we are prepared to do coming out of the Office of Finance and Budget and Committee on Appropriations. So I think we're proceeding in the proper way with regards to first authorizing the judiciary to implement that, using what they have already received in cash, and then any additional revenues, resources required will be addressed during either one of the bills that we have, 309 in this case, or through the regular budget hearing process, as we have requested these departments and agencies to provide what that number is for the upcoming fiscal year. In addition, when the governor submitted the budget for FY 2015, he took the balance, or he took the requirement of 100% implementation of hay and plugged it into the executive branch requests in his allocation. Then the allocation for all the other departments and agencies, because they did not receive that allocation, are short in the upcoming fiscal year budget. So the Attorney General's Office does not have a 2015 full implementation of the hay component in their staffing pattern, University of Guam, GCC, Department of Education, and such. And so that gap, that's a budget gap that this body has to look at, recognize, and resolve in the upcoming budget discussions. Thank you very much. And Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Especho.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 307-32, and I want to thank the Oversight Chair for the judiciary, the gentleman from Zonia, who continues, as well as each of us in this body, continues to express that the judiciary Guam is a separate but co-equal branch of government, and that the things that this legislature has had to do, Madam Speaker, to make sure that the judicial branch is not left behind, that the judicial branch is treated with the respect that it certainly deserves, but under the Organic Act, how they are a separate but co-equal branch of government, we've had to do things like exempt them from the allotment control, we had to do things to require that on a formula basis that they've been given, they be given their allotment and they're not short-changed, and those are just some instances that I'd like to call the public's attention to, to how the legislature has held firm and even, even continues to respect the executive branch as a separate but co-equal branch of government. And so certainly the legislature feels the pain of the judiciary whenever the executive branch makes decisions, policy decisions, that don't take into account the other branches of government. And so Bill 307 does that. I want to also lend my comments to recognize the judiciary for standing firm on the rule of law, and I said this at the public hearing, Madam Speaker, that when, when they were faced with the decision of whether or not to implement the unified, government-wide unified pay plan under the Competitive Wage Act of 2014, although it would have benefited them directly in terms of their salary, they've taken the position that, that under the current law and under the process by which the legislature has given the judicial council the authority to set their own competitive wages for the judiciary, they cannot implement the Competitive Wage Act as submitted by the governor on January 15, 2014. And so certainly what they've done is commendable. What we're doing here by giving them the authority to implement the Competitive Wage Act based on the current financial resources that they have, I would like to go a step further to make sure that we don't want to leave anybody behind, that we're, we do things consistent with our policy to recognize the judiciary as a separate but co-equal branch of government. And on line 12, Madam Speaker, I'd like to offer an amendment, which would be a new sentence, to read, "Nothing herein shall prohibit the retroactive payment to January 15, 2014." And I offer this as an amendment, and if this amendment passes, certainly there won't be any, any question as to what the legislature's intent was, and that the payment of these retroactive salary increases to January 15 certainly will still be based on the amount of financial resources that they have to do it, but as we heard from the retiring speaker, there could be other mechanisms through the legislature's continued action to provide for the balance therein. But I'd just like to offer, as an amendment, a new sentence after Guahan, to say, "Nothing herein shall prohibit the retroactive payment to January 15, 2014."
On the amendment offered by Senator Especho and Senator, we please need to get that in writing for the clerk, Senator Frank Uggun.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to stand in support of the proposed amendment, and, but, first of all, because it recognizes the co-equal branch of government and provides that flexibility. If, in fact, the judiciary can identify resources within its budget and provide the employees their just pay back to the original date of implementation of the Competitive Wage Act, then certainly we need to provide that flexibility. I just want to, in light of supporting that provision, caution our colleagues and this body, and recognizing that, yes, the judiciary has little flexibility in terms of, or has some flexibility in terms of moving funds around based on the budget that was allocated, but it does not have additional funding resources that it can easily take and supplant and pay this obligation and then not pay some of the other operational requirements. So I just wanted to extend that caution, consistent with my original statement, that the half a million dollars that was part of the bill as initially introduced is necessary to make the judiciary whole. And the Chairman of the Finance Committee had alluded to recognizing that obligation and ensuring that that funding mechanism is provided in a separate piece of legislation. So, Madam Speaker, I just wanted to not only caution the body with regards to thinking that, in fact, the judiciary has excess revenues that it could otherwise pay, but I believe that the sponsor of the amendment, providing that flexibility, is certainly very appropriate. Appropriate. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Niklas, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too rise in support of the amendment, particularly because of the way that the proffer of the amendment is wisely structuring the language. He's structuring it to say that nothing in this act shall prohibit the payment going back to January 15. It doesn't necessarily authorize or mandate that payment, it just says that because we're making this commitment now, we're not foregoing the commitment that was made back in January 15. And so through that opening of the door, the proffer of the amendment is going to allow the judiciary now to be able to come back and say, okay, going back to January 15, this is how much more it's going to require. So I'm just kind of speaking up in favor of the amendment, kind of reconciling the concerns brought up by the gentleman from Zonia, and also how it relates to the amendment as proffered by the Senator from DeRido? Daniel Hayes. Families from DeRido. But anyway, I just wanted to clarify that, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. I'm going to ask Senator Especho to read the amendment one more time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and colleagues. So it'll be a new sentence after Guahan. We would change the semicolon to a period, and the new sentence will read, "Nothing herein shall prohibit the retroactive payment to January 15, 2014."
2014.
2014, and I had that in writing.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so on the amendment, no objections, so ordered. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Senator Duñez, you recognize.
Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker. I certainly do rise in support of the mover of this bill, as has been mentioned, the good senator from Zonia, and I'd like to just read once again, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks and Recreation, Historical Preservation, and Land. And I do that, Madam Speaker, simply to make a couple of points, and I will ask the author to yield to a couple of questions that I have, as I read through Bill 307 and its proposal. Once again, to state clearly, Madam Speaker, I support the intent and the reasoning and rationale behind 307-32. The reason why I bring up once again the issue of the Chairman on Appropriations and his eloquent recitation on support of the bill was I remember very clearly, when we went over the issues with regard to the Competitive Wage Act, for the executive branch and all the other appropriations that we made, we went over with a fine-tooth comb, as we should. As a matter of fact, Madam Speaker, there were several attachments that were put to those pieces of legislation that finally ended up giving rise to the 32-068 that funded all of this activity to make our employees whole, once again, in supporting the third co-equal branch of government. So I would like to now ask the mover of the bill a couple of questions, if you would yield.
Senator, you share questions specifically to Bill 307?
Absolutely, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so you have to ask your question first, and then I would approach then the author.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I will ask the first question to you. Madam Speaker, I am proposing this question to you on Bill 307, as to, in Section 1, the recitation given, this is for the public's consumption as well, Republic Law 29-52 and Executive Order 2006-21, or transmittal of January 15, 2014, to a legislaturan entitled "The Government of Guam Competitive Wage Act of 2014, Subject to Appropriations As Provided By a Legislator in Guahan." So my first question would be, Madam Speaker, is this a reflection of the Department of Administration's findings with regard to the hay pay plan, and is that, was that transmitted via the plan being put forward to enumerate the compensation under this act?
Speaker Pangolino, do you yield to the question?
Actually, I was asking the author.
Oh, the author, okay. So can, he's asking if you can repeat your question again.
Yes, basically, in Section 1, there are a number of recitations to the good senator and sponsor from Zonia on this particular bill in terms of the Competitive Wage Act and its implementation. So my first question is, is this reflective of the Department Administration's work and due diligence that was done for all of the positions across the board with regard to that schedule? Is that what's represented within this section?
Senator, do you yield?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and to the good senator asking the question. Thank you very much for that question. If you recall back in, through Republic Law 29-52 and Executive Order 2006-21, that was the original hay study, hay plan, and it provided an evaluation of respective positions within the government of Guam, inclusive to some degree of positions within the judiciary of Guam. Now, the additional provision here is to allow for the recent submission by the Department of Administration back in January to this body of the document that was submitted, to provide that flexibility to the judiciary of Guam, to compare the compensation scheme and ensure that the decision they make is reflective of applying equity across the board. So that's, that's where the flexibility, we keep talking about flexibility and providing the judiciary that flexibility, this is where that language was retained as it applies to Republic Law 29-52 and Executive Order 2006-21. It was not deleted only specifically because both studies were conducted by third-party professionals, and the judiciary of Guam would have that discretion and that flexibility to look at the pay scales and make that decision in terms of the compensation. But yes, the additional provision would be more or less to ensure that the transmission that was received or presented to this body back in January is given to the judiciary, and that's part of the consideration. I hope that responds to the question that was posed, Madam Speaker, because I know that it's, my understanding of the question is, what, where does Republic Law 29-52 come into play in consolidation with the transmission that was provided to this body in January?
Madam Speaker, that certainly does answer my question, but then gives rise once again to my second question. It reinforces the fact why I need to ask this then. Once again, under that scheme as presented, and under the spirit, the spirit of which we followed, and as the retiring speaker, our good majority leader said, the autonomy, and I guess that's what we're focusing on here as well, is the autonomy of that ability to set the pay scale and the independent, I guess, as mentioned by the author, methodology use. Then, Madam Speaker, shouldn't this Bill 307-32 have a schedule as an attachment to it? Can I ask the author that?
Senator, do you yield to the question? Senator, do you yield to the question?
Madam Speaker, I would yield to, to the good senator, if he would like to incorporate as an attachment, but in my opinion, it was not considered as an attachment because it already makes direct reference to the document that was transmitted to this body, and it's explicit there, where all the transmitter of the document dated January 15, 2014 to the legislature entitled the Government of Guam Competitive Wage Act of 2014. So, rather than taking those multiple pages of document and attaching it, it already directly makes reference to that transmission which this body received in January.
So, Madam Speaker, then, that's exactly what I was trying to get to. And that is, and that is then, because there is some confusion, and I think maybe some would follow along with that, because of the multiple identifications within the bill in terms of what are. And, and so that the public wouldn't be confused, or as this bill is passed and transmitted to the governor, there wouldn't be any, there wouldn't be a confusion as to, does it mean then, that, that the autonomy that, of course, exists and what we would move forward on with regard to this bill would reflect a, a independent or a, or a finalization of, as the retiring speaker just answered the question now, as per the schedule that was put out and that was issued pursuant to, I guess, would then be the second, January 15, 2014, so that the people can understand and all of the government employees can understand that that parity exists with regard, and there's no need then, I guess, as the retiring speaker says, to duplicate the process and once again, attach that schedule. So, now the body, as well as the public, knows that that is the schedule and that the pay is as identified by the Department of Administration. So, I stand in full support of this legislation, and I thank the good mover of the bill, as well as the Chairman on Appropriations for the efficiency, I guess, as we see here in not having to attach the schedule. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motions, Senator Nicholas, yes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In line of the line of questioning brought up by the retiring speaker, I now have some concerns as to how it's, how Bill 307 may potentially be interpreted. On the surface, and to my understanding, the intent of the author is to basically say that the pay that was pretty much authorized and is currently being implemented right now, that the judiciary held off on, is now going, is now going to be allowable to be implemented within the judiciary. My concern is that, as the language is written, it states that notwithstanding any other provision of law on Section D, Line 5, which basically immediately opens the door for everything that has happened already to be reviewed once again. And then it states that notwithstanding any other provision of law to adopt the pay plan and pay schedules for the classified and unclassified employees of the judicial branch, consistent with, and then it goes down to list all of those other items there that transpired over the course of January into February. And I am concerned now then, that if we are, and, and what happened was, when we came through that whole process, we came through that whole process, making it very clear that we're going to adopt the pay, the pay plan with certain changes. And those changes were going to include not, not having salary adjustments for directors and deputy directors, not having salary adjustments for senators, not having salary adjustments for the executive branch, the governor and the lieutenant governor. Now, I just, I, I'm worried about how all the parts fit here together now, because since we're putting in a notwithstanding any other provision of law clause here, and we're putting in all these other items here, Section 13 of Public Law 29-52, Executive Order 2006-21, or, not and, but or, the transmittal of January 15, 2014, to a list of Turin, Guahan, are we now saying that anything, any of those things now must be consistent with the judicial branch, and then do we now open the door for everything have to be consistent with the actual transmittal as originally sent down? Because then that would potentially reverse the actions that this body took to say, "No pay increases for senators, no pay increases for the governor, lieutenant governor, no pay increases for directors and deputy directors." That is my concern. I guess I would pose that as a question to the author, or anybody else who may be interested in, in providing some kind of clarity for me.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
I'll go and repeat my, I'll go and repeat my, my question, Madam Speaker. The way that the sections here are referenced from lines nine through 12 indicate the course of actions that took place from January into February that resulted in the pay adjustments for the Government of Guam employees. After those things took place, we then came in and introduced a new bill that changed some of those things that took place. And the things that we changed were the pay adjustments for senators, directors, deputy directors, and the governor, lieutenant governor. We said no to all of those things. Now, what we're doing is we're coming in here with this new bill, 307, and saying that judiciary pay will be consistent to what was transmitted on January 15, notwithstanding any other provision of law. And so, I'm worried now that that notwithstanding clause will negate the, the actions we took to exclude directors, deputy directors, governor, lieutenant governor, and senators, because it's now superseding the consistency of the January 15 transmittal, notwithstanding the law that we passed to change that. And so, my question is, does this act, would this potentially reverse the bill that we passed post-January 2015, post-January 15, 2014? Will it reverse the actions we took to hold back on giving out raises, those very, very high raises, to the appointed and elected officials? And that's kind of what I wanted to clarify, because the questions raised by the good senator from Afamie kind of make me wonder now, if we do pass this, is it open to interpretation that the, that the notwithstanding provision requires us to be consistent with what was transmitted on January, on January 15? And does that now reset everything back to what was originally proposed?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the question from the good senator from Talaforfo slash Delirio. But, Madam Speaker, when we look at this particular proposal, it references on line seven, the judicial branch of government. You look at where this section will be codified, it is in Chapter 5, Title 7 GCA, which is under the code of the judicial judiciary of Guam. So, specifically, the notwithstanding any other provision of law, there are other stipulations in law aside from Public Law 29-52, Executive Order 2006-21, and aside from the transmission that was provided in January that is somewhat restricted. I don't have direct reference to those, but I recall enacting legislation in the past that provided some additional restrictions. Now, this would allow the judiciary specifically, judiciary branch of government specifically, to be able to implement a Competitive Wage Act program for its employees. And when it references 29-52 as well as the transmission, it allows the judiciary of Guam to be able to look at the third-party evaluation of positions, what their compensation should be, the appropriate compensation should be based on the job performances and responsibilities, and then allow the judiciary of Guam to be able to implement the act. So, based on this conversation and based on the initial intent, Madam Speaker, of the introduction of the legislation, it is applicable solely to the judiciary of Guam, giving them that authorization necessary to provide or to implement their Competitive Wage Act program, which already has been implemented across the board in the executive branch. Excellent question. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Senator, with recent spite with the answer, was he able to answer your question?
He, he, he has. I, I see the intent, and that's, I, I share, I share the understanding of what the intent is. But what our intent is here versus what may actually be interpreted, I have seen in the past, laws get strung together with multiple, you know, interpretive outcomes that, that lead to a, a rendered decision that isn't necessarily consistent with what was probably clearly the actual intent of the law. We saw that with tax credits, for example, of the teeth in campus, and how some things got interpreted. You pull together different laws, and all of a sudden, you have an authorization that wasn't clear, but, but was extrapolated based on the different laws in the books. And so, what I'm worried about now is that we're just, if we do pass this, are we creating another ambiguous circumstance that may be extrapolated to interpret something else that we would need to have to, you know, that would, that would result in us saying, "Wait a minute, that's not what was intended," and then, you know, the whole thing going back and forth as to, "Well, it's happening already," you know? And if we're saying that we're going to be allowing the judicial branch to implement something consistent with something that was transmitted and then thereafter changed, but we're saying notwithstanding any of the provision of law, I'm just worried now, I mean, are we, are we opening up equal protection issues? Because we're now saying that something that was transmitted and changed doesn't apply to this one group, but it applies to all these other groups, you know? So, I'm, I'm, at this point, I'm at a position where I want to pause, and I think that maybe what was suggested by the senator from Afamie might be the better way to go for us to restate the language in a way that just adopts an attachment that specifies what we are authorizing strictly for the judiciary, rather than saying that we want to adopt something consistent with something else that was changed at some later time, notwithstanding the laws that affected that. I know it's very confusing, but I think that if we can, if we go about it in a cleaner way, as suggested by the senator from Afamie, by just going with an attachment and stating that the pay schedule shall be as follows, and, and, you know, in the findings and intent, we can say that it's referencing X, Y, and Z, but the actual legal portion of it stating the sections and, and what's being adopted, we can make it a little bit more tight. That way, there's no misinterpretation, because the last thing any of us are going to want in this body is to pass this, and then all of a sudden, pay raises for directors and deputy directors, pay raises for the governor, lieutenant governor, pay raises for senators, which none of us in here are intending to do at all, you know? But I just don't want any kind of language that might open the door for that kind of extrapolation. So, I think I would like to make a recommendation that we, that we set it aside and maybe rework it, but I will yield to the author for that, for that decision.
Thank you, Senator. And, yes, I think everyone's been following with your discussion and your request for a set aside. I'm going to ask then the author to make that request. So, so, Senator, there's a, a request for a set aside, and I want to, to you, to you as the author.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I'd like to yield to the good senator, but also highlighting that he, he obviously brings some very legitimate issues. We don't want it to be cross-applicable to the entire Government of Guam and be misinterpreted. So, I certainly need to, to seek legal guidance from our legal counsel in terms of what language should be incorporated. But we must understand that in this particular case, the judiciary of Guam has traditionally used the hay methodology in terms of interpreting the compensation scale for much of their employees, classified and unclassified. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So, then, we, the, the bill will be set aside, and it will not lose its place, of course, and as soon as you're ready to, to bring forth an amendment or an attachment, whatever it be then, that would get to you. So, it will be set aside. Bill number 309, as substituted, Speaker Panglinian, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd move that Bill 309-32 substituted by Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Works, Recreation, Start Preservation and Land, be placed in the third reading file, and that we waive the committee and hold the discussion and discuss it on the floor, and that we just, since we're at about 1:00, that we recess until, is it 3:30?
3:30.
Yes, so that we can attend some of the high school graduations at this time.
Okay, so, yes, so, on that motion then, without an objection, so, order. We will then recess. I know the graduation's at 2:00 at UOG, and we'll return at 3:30. We are in recess.